To order the special meeting for Thursday, February twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty one. Roll call, please, Ms. Leno.
Yes. Commissioner Alexander.
Here.
Commissioner Bogus.
Here.
Commissioner Collins. Commissioner Vice President Lamb.
Yes, here.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Here.
And President Lopez.
Here.
That's five attendees. Student Delegate Lamb. And Student Delegate Liang. Okay, that's it, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. This afternoon, we will have two action items and one informational item. Beginning with section A, general information. There's a notice of virtual meeting ADA accommodations and translation services. Section B, special order of business. We will be hearing two items together. Item one, approve option to ground lease agreement between San Francisco Unified School District and MP Francis Scott Key One LLC for development of moderate income educator housing. And item two, approve option to ground lease agreement between San Francisco Unified School District and MP Francis Scott Key Two Associates LP for development of low-income educator housing. Can I get a motion in a second for both items?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Superintendent Matthews, can you call on the designee who will be reading the recommendation into the record?
Thank you, President Lopez. Our Deputy Superintendent Niang Li will be discussing the item and reading the recommendation into the record.
Thank you, Dr. Matthews, and good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for making yourselves available for this special meeting. And I can provide a little bit of background. This is, this is all really good news related to our first bricks and mortar educator housing development, which is quietly still progressing. And the action items before you are two items that are necessary to secure financing for the project. And there are two separate items. One is, as was mentioned in their titles, one is to approve an option to ground lease related to the moderate income housing representing eighty to one hundred twenty percent of area median income. That's a total of about a hundred units. And then the second option, this is item B two, is for thirty-four units of low-income housing, low-income educator housing, and that's for the units for forty to sixty percent of area median income. And this is, this is all necessary to, to, to secure the respective financing for, for the project as a whole. And as an informational item, we will also be providing an, an update on the project at the Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting on Monday, the twenty eighth, which will provide an opportunity for Commissioners in attendance and members of the public to, to hear more about the project, the overall progress on the project, reminder of the elements of the project and the timeline. So today, we, we do have a time-sensitive need for your approval to meet a March one application date to secure the financing. One other thing that I'd like to just make sure to mention is that when the materials were originally posted for the meeting on Tuesday evening, February twenty second, the documents reflected that date, February twenty second. And those are still the documents that are posted on Board Docs. But we intend to execute versions of the documents that are identical in every respect, except that the date would be modified to reflect today's date upon approval of the options, February twenty fourth rather than February twenty second. So with that, I can answer any questions. We also have Alicia, Alicia Gaylord from Midpan, who was a developer. If there are detailed questions that that we need her help to answer. And maybe General Counsel, how is it proper for me to actually read the recommended action into the record as well?
Sure. I, I just wanted to also note, we just need a separate vote on these items tonight.
All right. And President Lopez, shall I read the first one into the record first and then then following the roll call on that, read the second item? Or should I read them both?
So right now, we are hearing them both together, and then I, I will leave it up to public comment before we vote on them separately. So the, how you present it would be for both items. If you read them into the record, then do both.
Very well. Okay, thank you. So the first item, which is Special Order of Business B one, the recommended action is that the Board of Education approve the option to lease agreement between SFUSD and MP Francis Scott Key Two Associates LP, Mid, Midpan Housing Corporation, to allow Midpan to seek financing for development of low-income affordable, I'm sorry. I'm reading the wrong one. For the development of moderate-income affordable housing for educators at the former site of the Francis Scott Key Elementary School, thirteen sixty forty-third Avenue, San Francisco. The option would be for a term ending December thirty first, two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-two, with a six-month option to extend. Pursuant to Education Code one seven four six six, approval of the option to ground lease requires a two-thirds vote of approval. And then moving on to the second action item, item B two, the recommended action is as follows. That the Board of Education approve the option to lease agreement between SFUSD and MP Francis Scott Key Two Associates LP, Midpan Housing Corporation, to allow Midpan to seek financing for development of low-income affordable housing for educators at the former site of the Francis Scott Key Elementary School, thirteen sixty forty-third Avenue, San Francisco. The option would be for a term ending December thirty first, two thousand and twenty-two, with a six-month option to extend. Pursuant to Education Code Sections one seven four six six, approval of the option to ground lease requires a two-thirds vote of approval.
Okay, thank you for that information. Let's now open it up to public comment before we begin discussion.
Thank you, President Lopez. Please raise your hand if you care to speak to either of the educator, educator housing items that were presented this evening or afternoon. Can that be repeated in Spanish and Chinese, please? Thank you. Seeing none.
Okay, let's check with Commissioners. Are there any questions or comments on both items? Commissioner Alexander, see your physical hand.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Yeah, okay. I talked a bit with Deputy Superintendent Lee about this, but just wanted to kind of ask about it publicly to make sure that there's my colleagues in the public were aware of it in terms of the shift in the unit mix of the project. Because last year, we approved a, the lease option for this project that had, I think it was forty-eight units that were low-income, below sixty percent of area median income, and now this would be reducing it to thirty-four. And we approved eighty-six moderate-income units at eighty to one hundred and twenty percent of area median income, and now that's going up to a hundred. So my understanding is this has to do with the kind of availability of tax credit financing from the federal government. And it seems like we don't really have much choice, but I just wanted to kind of put that out there and express my concern that we're, you know, using public land for educator housing, which I think is really good. But we're still kind of, because of the financing mechanisms available, being constrained into who those, those units are actually affordable to. So right, there's a very specific mix of units, and now it's shifting to being more higher income or moderate income compared to low income. I, I think this is a, this problem has to do with how housing, what's called affordable housing is financed in general. But, but I just wanted to express my concerns about it, because I think it's, I mean, the, the fact is if, if more than thirty-four units worth of paraeducators apply for housing, they're not going to, they're not going to be able to live there, because they're not going to make enough money compared to comparing what we pay paraeducators to what's actually in these units. So we've kind of by virtue of this unit mix and the financing, we're restricting how many of each income level of educator can, can live there. Again, that's not kind of our choice, but I guess I just wanted to, to put that out there. And I don't know, Deputy Superintendent Lee, if you had any other comments on that, but thought it was important to say it at least.
Thank you, Commissioner. I, I can provide a little bit of, of context for this. And this is, as, as we discussed the other day as well. This, the resulting unit mix, or the unit mix that, that we're currently planning, is, is actually the same as the original unit mix that had been presented to the board in, you know, in prior meetings, as well as, as discussed in partnership with UESF. And this is, this is going to stretch my knowledge of, of the arcane systems of federal tax credit financing, but I'll try to summarize, and Ali Gaylord is here from Midpan, who, who knows this much more expertly than I do, of course. The original plan was to pursue the type of, of tax credit financing that we are pursuing now, which is nine percent tax credit, tax credits. And we were disappointed that in our previous attempt to secure that financing well over a year ago, that, that the project did not, was not deemed, you know, the, the necessary point criteria for securing financing at that stage. The, the subsequent opportunity, which was much more competitive, was for a different type of tax credit financing, which was at the four percent level. And in pursuing that, that, that would have allowed deeper subsidies on the unit mix. But we were unsuccessful in that, in that pursuit. And so now we are, the cycle has come around again to pursue the original nine percent tax credit financing option. And so we're back to where we, where we were originally. And, and that's the, the unit mix that we had been, for the most part, for the life of this project, planning to pursue all along. And then just one small additional comment about the, the, the income mix. It's, in terms of the, the income restrictions and the income eligibility, the, the restrictions on the, the percentages of AMI for each set of units, if you will, is, is an upper limit on, on income. So if there's a, a unit that's associated with the forty percent of area median income, then the, then that unit is only eligible to households, employees that live in households with no more than, than that level of AMI. And that's true for each level, forty, fifty, sixty, et cetera. So I, I just wanted to, to clarify that that's, that's the, that's the way that the income limitations work, that, that the, that there's an upper limit on the amount of income that can be associated with a particular unit.
Sorry, Deputy Superintendent Lee, I don't want to, don't mean to be contradictory, but that, that is true. But the rent is also set at that level. So, so it's not, so if you make significantly less than that, you can't afford the rent. So you're not qua, you don't qualify, right? So the rent, and I happen to know about this through my work with Faith and Action, another place where we've looked into these housing things. So if you're at, so if there's a forty percent or sixty, let's say sixty percent AMI unit, the rent is set, so if you make sixty percent of area median income, then the rent would be roughly thirty percent, or some, or maybe it's a little more, but there's, it's set according to the AMI level. So if you're making, let's say thirty percent of AMI, you would technically qualify for that sixty percent unit, as you just said, but you couldn't afford it. And, and you couldn't pay the rent, like you, you wouldn't actually be eligible to live in that unit, because you wouldn't make enough money to, to actually pay the rent. So they, so they first, they look at your income level to qualify, then you actually have to make enough so that the rent isn't eight, seventy percent of your income or something along those lines. So it, it does, it does limit who's, who's able to live in those, in those units, right? Or am I getting that wrong?
Yeah, I think we're both right. I think it's
Yeah, yeah, and I wasn't, right, yeah, I think I wasn't contradicting what you were saying. I was just adding on that layer of like, of the fact that it does, even though it is an upper limit, it's just, and, and again, this is the mix, it seems like this is the mix we have to do, as, as you just said, because that's what the project was designed for. I'm just raising the issue that I think how the housing stuff, how this is financed, puts us in this situation where we have to restrict who's able to live there. And I'm not, I'm going to support it, because I think it's, I think it's a valuable project, but I think in the longer term, I think we need to just at least raise these questions of how affordable housing is financed and, and look for other potential sources of funding.
Thank you, Commissioner Alexander. I just want to see if there's any response to that from Commissioners as well, or if you have other questions or comments. Oh, Commissioner Bogus.
Yeah, I would just say, I think just being really interested in how in the future we can, you know, do these processes in a better way that leads to more affordable housing and more housing units altogether. And really trying to navigate the, the trickier pieces that are involved, like I think the idea of teacher housing and figuring out, excuse me, ways to get more affordable housing built in the city is definitely a, a part of our responsibility on the board. And so just, just really looking forward to us to know how to do it in better and more more robust ways as we move forward. But that was all. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Alexander, as well, for your comments.
Okay. Seeing no other questions or comments. We will be voting on both items separately. So let's begin with the roll call vote on the motion to approve option to ground lease agreement between San Francisco Unified School District and MP Francis Scott Key One LLC for development of moderate-income educator housing. This is Special Order two, two, two dash two, four SO one. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Alexander.
Yes.
Commissioner Bogus.
Yes.
Commissioner Collins. Vice President Lamb.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
And President Lopez.
Yes.
That's five eyes.
Thank you. Item two, roll call vote on the motion to approve option to ground lease agreement between the San Francisco Unified School District and MP Francis Scott Key Two Associates LP for development of low-income educator housing. This is Special Order two, two, two dash two, four SO two. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Alexander.
Yes.
Commissioner Bogus.
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb.
Yes.
Our Vice President, I'm sorry. Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
And President Lopez.
Yes.
Commissioner Collins. Just wanted to make sure, that's five eyes.
Okay, and now our last item for tonight's special meeting. Section C, Discussion of Informational Items. Item one, supplement to the annual update for the two thousand and twenty-one dash twenty-two LCAP. We will hear from our Director of Budget Services Anne Marie Gordon and Chief of Research, Planning and Assessment, Ritu Kana.
Yeah, I was double muted. Thank you and good afternoon, everybody. When, when you're ready, we can, we can begin the presentation for today's item.
Thank you, Alicia, for pulling that up.
Thank you. So yes, I, my name is Anne Marie Gordon. I am the Executive Director of Budget Services for the school district. And today, we will be sharing an informational update on the Local Control and Accountability Plan as part of a new mid-year update. On the next slide, we have our objectives for today, which are to present updates on the supplements to the annual update for the LCAP. Also present updates on the mid-year implementation data that we have available related to our LCAP as well as expenditure and implementation data. So this is really across all the different components of the LCAP, where things stand at this point in the year. And then also our next steps for developing the twenty-two, twenty-three update to our three-year LCAP. And before, so we, yeah, so I realized that I jumped right in to referring to the LCAP. And the LCAP is the Local Control and Accountability Plan, which is a three-year plan updated each year by SFUSD and every district in California. It is a plan that connects our goals, our actions, our data, and our funding to create one full picture of how we use our resources to support our students and reach our goals as a district. On the next slide, we have some information about the supplement to the annual update. This is a new component of the LCAP, and it is a one-time mid-year report based on the allocation of additional funds to all school districts in California as part of the State Budget Act and the Federal American Rescue Plan Act. So these were new funds to the district this year. They are the state and federal relief funds that we have shared updates on, reported on, and that we, we as a district used to maintain stability during this year to avoid making budget reductions during the COVID nineteen pandemic. What that means is that the supplement asks questions about how we use those funds to increase some of our services and take on additional programs. Because most of our funds were included in this year's LCAP, the focus of our responses is on providing continuity of services. We do have some, some federal learning recovery funds that will extend the investments that we're currently making using our Expanded Learning Opportunities Grant. We also have received additional concentration grant funding from the Local Control Funding Formula. In the current year, we have not been able to use those funds to increase our staff due to the budget deficit. But in this upcoming school year, we have a more clear, a more clear allocation formula for allocating those funds directly to school sites. We also continue to seek out and listen to feedback from our educational partners to inform the plans and revisions to plans that have been developed over the past several years. That includes our Learning Continuity Plan, the Expanded Learning Opportunities Grant Plan, our LCAP, our ESR Expenditure Plan, et cetera. And while we've had success in implementation of our learning recovery strategies this year, we have continued to face some challenges related to staffing vacancies and responding and evolving our response to the COVID nineteen pandemic. This slide is a summary of much of the narrative in that supplement itself. It is also an attachment to this item on the agenda today. So I encourage everybody to take a look and read through that document as well. The next slide is a short, just a short orientation to San Francisco's LCAP. We have three goals, student achievement, access and equity, and accountability, which are aligned to our strategic plan, Transform Learning, Transform Lives. And within those goals, a collective forty actions. Part of this mid-year report, right, is a mid-year evaluation of how we're doing, how we are implementing these actions. And in doing that, we identified a hundred and eighty-three activities within each of those forty actions. To share more about how we went through this mid-year evaluation and reflection and our findings, I'm going to pass it over to Dr. Ritu Kana, the Chief of Research, Planning and Assessment.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, Commissioners, colleagues, and members of the public. Can I get to the previous slide, please, first? Thank you so much. As you can see that, you know, we have these three goals and forty actions, but when we really tried to break it down, what we found is that within each one of these actions, there were multiple activities. To give you an example, I'll read out one of the actions. SFUSD will continue to invest in programs such as San Francisco Pathway to Teaching, Internal Residency Programs, Para-to-Teacher Program, and our Transforming Leadership for Equity and Excellence Program, so that we maximize existing talent grounded in SFUSD vision and culture. So as you can see in this one action, there were four programs mentioned, which made us break it down into four different actions or activities. And so that's, that's how the forty actions became hundred and eighty-three activities. We also want to say that this whole, this whole activity of reflecting on these actions did help build our continuous improvement leadership skills, which is the focus for this year. Secondly, it also helped us be more thoughtful and accountable to these actions, even mid-year. And last but not the least, is definitely giving information that we've collected to write our next plan and give our update to our stakeholder groups and the State Department. Okay, next slide, please. Next, thank you. This slide gives us an overview of what information was gathered for each activity. The information that was really gathered was completed by department leaders and their teams associated with the content of each activity. So we did get a good ninety to ninety-five percent completion on our activities. So we do have data on the implementation of ninety-five percent of our activities. The questions we asked were around the following, which is the extent of implementation, the quality of implementation, and last but not the least, your reflection of what you are going to do, having said the extent and quality. So again, in continuous improvement, what we call is the plan-do-study act stage. And this reflection on the implementation mid-year is the study phase of our continuous improvement cycle. So in orange, what you will see is the first three questions, which is around extent of implementation. So the very first question that we asked was, was the activity implemented? Simple yes and no answer. If yes, who was the target audience and how many were reached? And you can see that, you know, who was the target audience is the second one. And how many were reached? For how many were reached, we wanted to get, you know, some relative ideas. We said, did you manage to reach some of the intended audience, half of the intended audience, more than half, or all of the intended audience? You can see the four-point rubric in, in orange, right next to extent of implementation. The next set of questions was around focused on the quality of implementation. So for the quality, we first asked, how was the activity implemented? Describe the process. Secondly, we asked to rate the quality of implementation. For this reflection, we also had another four-point rating scale that you see here in green. And lastly, what we asked is for evidence of implementation, which is you could have meeting agendas or any tools that were developed or artifacts from the meeting or from the activity that, you know, you could attach. So that's evidence of implementation. But coming back to the quality, this definitely gave us an opportunity to self-rate ourselves on our implementation, which is always a challenge because we tend to jump to impact without reflecting on implementation. So this was a good muscle-building activity. The rating moved from just having a plan, which we called emerging, to inconsistent versus consistent implementation. And as we moved then from integrating to sustaining, it's like you not only have consistent implementation, but then you also have ways to incorporate and act on feedback. So you have a system to incorporate and act on feedback. Finally, as part of the study phase, we needed to reflect on implementation and plan for our next cycle with the lens of continuous improvement. So we said, having done this reflection, what would you do? Would you adopt, adapt, or abandon this activity? And what is your rationale for your decision? Okay, next slide, please. Let's see the results. So again, these are the results. The one result which you don't see here is the first question which was asked. How many of these activities have been implemented? And what we saw is 160 activities of the 183 that, you know, we received responses for have been implemented or in the process of being implemented. 13 are not implemented. So we did receive a response for an additional 13, which was a no. Next, what we see is, to your left, you'll see the slide that displays the results for the extent of implementation. And as you can see, if you add all the activities to the right of that, which say more than half and all, under those categories, there are 109 activities, or 71% of the activities did manage to reach more than half or all of the intended audiences. Now, I'm going to move to the right-hand side of the slide, and you will see that we have given the results for quality of implementation. And as you look at the chart, again, moving to the right and looking at integrating and sustaining, we see that 41% of the activities are integrated, which means there's consistent implementation. And 29% of the activities are sustained, which means there's consistent implementation and systemic adaptations or response to feedback, as I mentioned. If you would like to see what was the monitoring tool or what were some of the goals and actions, we have attached a link to it under Source. Next slide, please. Again, one key question we always need to ask ourselves in the continuous improvement process is, are we going to continue with these actions? And as we asked this question, we did see that almost 90% of them, or over 90% of them, we want to continue with. So there was an adopt or an adapt that was listed in it. And then there were just 11 actions which did, which, you know, the leaders or those connected to the activities said, we want to abandon. And the rationales for the abandon is listed in summary form right there above the chart. Again, I want to remind everyone, this is just a mid-year pulse check on determining whether these actions will be adopted, adapted, or abandoned after the budget cycle. There could be more that get abandoned. We don't know yet. But at this point, we will be sharing our, our results with stakeholder groups, especially our NCAP group. As we also present our implementation pulse check, I, I have added a summary of our mid-year impact data pulse check. You can see the link to what we have posted. It's on our district website, and the link is right here under mid-year data results on attendance and academics. These reports contain our overall summaries on data disaggregated by all program and grade groups. And it's available on our website. So this is also our mid-year impact data. Thank you so much. I'm going to turn it back to Anne Marie.
Thank you. So we have just a little bit more. On the next slide, we have a short summary on the expenditures. So the positive report that Dr. Kana shared about implementation and consistent fidelity does indicate that at a high level, our resources are appropriately aligned to ensure that those activities can be carried out. We do anticipate more salary savings than usual based on higher staffing vacancies than we've had in prior years. But to get into more details, we are planning to share a little bit more as we prepare and present the second interim report next week and the following week at board meetings. So at those meetings, we'll be able to go into more granular detail about the kind of patterns of spending across the LCAP and can provide a goal and action by action update on the budget compared to spending so far this year. Our final slide has just a few next steps. First off, we are now officially in our budget development and school planning time of year. We will also be taking this information forward to engage our educational partners through the LCAP Task Force and other engagement opportunities. There will be more information coming about that very soon. And we will be building upon this mid-year reflection to prepare a draft LCAP for public review. And the plan is for that draft to be available by around spring break for more time for feedback and input before we receive recommendations from our advisories and bring the final version of the LCAP forward for board review and approval in June. That concludes our presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that information. And I just want to acknowledge the slower pace you all were going. I know it's a lot of information, and people really appreciate breaking down everything you're sharing in a way that's digestible. So before we discuss, let's open it up to public comment, see if there are any speakers.
Thank you, President Lopez. Please raise your hand if you care to speak to the LCAP item. Can that please be repeated in Spanish and Chinese?
Buenas tardes. Por favor levante sus manos y les añadan comentarios públicos relacionados a el PAC. Gracias.
If you want to express your opinion on the LCAP, please raise your hand. Thank you.
I'm seeing no hands raised at this time.
Okay, thank you for checking. Let's now open it up for a discussion amongst the board. Commissioners, are there any questions or comments on this item? Commissioner Bogus?
Thanks. Yeah, I had questions. I think just primarily focused on slides four, five, and six. And just really interested in kind of the process of kind of the way we're assessing the activities we're doing and the impact they're having and the way that they're leading to outcomes. And was wondering if you could speak a little bit more to that and just kind of the way that student and family voices is, I guess, fully integrated into that process or in outcome data as such as, as well included.
That's an excellent question, Commissioner Bogus. As of now, this activity was done just by the Central Office Leader that was associated with that activity. So it was more a self-rating or a self-reporting. This still has not gone out to the stakeholder group that was the audience or for whom the activity was designed. So that part has, is not what's reported here. This is just a self-reflection and reporting by the Central Office team leaders.
I appreciate that clarity. Thank you. And I guess as a follow-up question, I'm, I'm sorry, did you want to add more?
No, please go ahead.
I was going to add that we actually have been planning the next week's LCAP Task Force meeting and really thinking about how we want to do community conversations over the next several months and see this as a really great tool where we can say, okay, here was the internal assessment, right, the self-reported review of how implementation is going. How are we or are we not seeing this impact the experience at school sites for families, for students? I'm seeing that kind of next step into the implementation and what that feels like and looks like on the ground, being a really important kind of next step to build towards some of the feedback we've received about the LCAP in the past.
Okay, no, I appreciate that. And I guess additionally, how much flexibility do we have with our budget constraints and kind of staffing constraints to really kind of make adjustments and changes kind of based off the input and the feedback that kind of comes through this process? And is there anything that, like I, as a board member, should keep in mind to kind of like limit my expectations and hopes of kind of like what's possible from kind of where we currently are versus where everyone might want us to be?
That's a tough question. I think one of the, you know, one of the major, I think, tasks for this upcoming year's LCAP is really remapping the expenditures based on our balancing plan. That that's really going to give us a, an important comparison point from how the budget, you know, kind of is incorporated through all of our actions currently to how that will change once the balancing plan is fully carried out through budget development. I think the goal is for us to have a draft of that, right, included in the draft at the end of March. So I think from there, we'll be able to really see what, what, you know, we'll see what it's looking like, and then we'll have a few months before we finalize. So I think that, that's where we stand at this point.
Okay, and Commissioner Alexander?
Thank you. Yeah, this is, I think, following up on some of Commissioner Bogus's points or questions. I think this is really exciting. So first of all, thank you for organizing this process of really aligning the LCAP with a detailed assessment so that we can think about this question of alignment of resources. I guess, one, I'm just curious if anyone on staff has sort of bigger picture reflections. I mean, for example, one thing that, when I looked at this, the number 183 activities is shockingly large to me. And I'm imagining that as a school principal, if, if staff leaders in Central Office have 183 different activities, and if the one chief kind of that you gave is an example, you know, there were four activities in there that were all very important, but those were big activities, right? So the activities aren't necessarily small things. And I guess, and this is something I've heard from site leaders and folks in Central Office, that sometimes it feels like we're doing too much. And so that we're trying to do all these things that we're not able to do anything really well because we have all these different, and there's perhaps siloing within central departments. So if we have 183 different things happening, it just struck me that, that we said 45 of them were being done with consistent fidelity and systemic adaptations, but we only decided to abandon 11 of them. So that, that, I would have personally loved to see the abandoned number over 100, honestly. Like I think, I think if we're going to do the work well, we've got to say, what are those 45? You know, and really keep doing those 45. And, and I agree with Commissioner Bogus, too, that I think we can't make claims about their effectiveness without talking to the, the folks in the schools, which I think everyone agrees to with, too. But I just, I think this is a really good first step. And I guess I'm just curious around that question of like, are we, what's the leadership team thinking around kind of? Because it's really hard, and it's really hard to abandon things, right? Because people, those are like staff that are doing those things, right? So I don't think that's an easy process. I just, but I just want to raise that as a question that I feel like we need to be, especially in a time of declining resources, I think in general, honing in on things that work and doing them more, right? And having, if we have, you know, teams of people, they should be focused on fewer things, in my opinion.
I'm hoping that if there's one reflection that comes out of this, it's exactly what you are saying, which is we have fewer focused priority actions so that it's clearer even to sites what we can resource and support. But as you know, there are so many resolutions, board resolutions. There are so many different district priorities. And then there is feedback that we receive on things we have to do. And so I saw how the activities started to build up, but I wish we would do that kind of a laser focus.
Well, thank you. And I think from the board perspective, I think, I definitely hear the feedback on the resolutions. And I think, so that's good feedback for us. And, you know, I think I, for one, would, would like to commit to making some of those hard decisions, right? And I think this process will help, right? Because if we can look at those 45, let's start with the 45, right, that are, that seem to be doing, we think they're getting results. So if we, if we can talk with folks in the field, see if there's more data, then maybe we start that way rather than saying, rather than saying, we're going to cut these things. Let's try to think about what, what is working, what do we want to invest in? And then, yeah, we do have to let some other things go or put them on hold. But, but, but I think, I think we've got to do that as a, as a system. So I'm just, thank you for beginning that process.
And Vice President Lam?
Thank you. And thank you to the staff for the presentation, the update. And I really appreciate the comments from Commissioners. Because similarly, no surprise, you know, I really would like to, as we are embarking on this process, you know, how are we looking at the continuous improvement? And how is it tying to student outcomes? We've now finished our first in-person semester, heading into, you know, the final sprint to, of our first year of our entire system being back to in-person learning and post, you know, with the COVID recovery. So I, I do think that, you know, moving forward, how important it is to really continue have the LCAP be central to everything that we talk about and how we measure ourselves around the progress we must make for our students. And, you know, if you look at the level of investments, right, between our state education recovery dollars to our federal dollars, they are significant. And we did make a very conscious decision to invest those dollars of $100 million so it could create stabilization. And now I really feel like we're going to need to start heading into, what does that implementation, what has that meant? And how do we stay focused? And I appreciate that feedback because I And I appreciate that feedback because I do hear that time and time again about how stretched we are, not only with the structural deficit and our budget constraints moving forward, but what we've also kind of set layered on for ourselves as a district. So I, I feel like I probably just said a bunch of agreements to what my colleagues have raised, but staying focused and really, however, you know, the superintendent, the leadership team, and the board needs clarity from us around direction. I really want to be able to help support that work as well.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from Commissioners or staff? Okay, seeing none, this meeting is now adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you so much.
Good evening.
Thank you, everybody.